I'd like to call this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order July seventeenth at seven P M. If you're able to stand, please join us and pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemedness of God.
Item one A, official meeting notification. Dr. Ritter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and the West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. And on one B, roll call.
Here. I am here. Loth?
Here.
Pollock?
Here.
Fickenbotham?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Absent excuse.
And medved, absent excuse.
Item number two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I have Tom with the motion and Tracy with the second.
I would like to make a motion to remove section eight, item F of new business, the discussion and action to approve the 2023-24 academic standards from the agenda and have it sent to the teaching and learning committee for further review.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Kim and a second from Eric in regards to moving item, removing item eight F from the agenda. Any discussion?
We do have a statutory requirement for approval of annual notice of standards at the first board meeting of the year, and this is our first board meeting of the new academic and fiscal year.
Notice of posting or notice of approval?
Notice of approval, correct, Mr. Mizziak?
Does it have to be the first meeting, or do we just have to notify them annually?
I believe in statute, we can double check this, it is the first meeting of the year, as this is the start to the year to utilize those standards. Mr. Mizziak is checking that right now.
Last year, I believe we did it in the August meeting? Or was it July?
I think our background references one twenty twelve, paragraph thirteen, annually, prior to the beginning of the school term, notify the parents and guardians of pupils enrolled in the school district of the pupil academic standards adopted under one eighteen point thirty-one G A one. That will be in effect for the school year.
So it requires to have it prior to the start of the semester, which?
Prior to the beginning of the school term, so I think we have this month and next month.
But according to what I'm seeing, section one twenty dot twelve parentheses thirteen in the state statutes requires each school board to include an item on the agenda of the first board meeting of each school year.
Correct.
So I think we have to have it on the agenda. We?
You could table and move forward, right?
Table period certain?
I think we need to leave it on the agenda.
Okay, so it can remain on there, needs to remain on the agenda, given what we've just discussed. At the time that that item comes up, we could entertain a separate motion?
Correct.
For different action.
Correct.
Okay, we do have that motion out there. We would have to take a vote on it.
Or do Kim and Eric retract their motion? Their amended motion?
Well, are we confident that we can, at the time that this comes up on the agenda, then take a look and vote on?
From what they're explaining and reading, it sounds like we just have to have it on our agenda for discussion.
Which it is.
And we can make a decision on what do we like to do with it at that time. So just not remove it from the agenda.
So we'll discuss it at the end?
So I think we'll table it and as likely what will happen, and it'll go to the teaching and learning committee meeting, which could be scheduled ASAP. That means as soon as possible.
Yeah, we would have one at the beginning of August anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we vote? Yeah, I'll take a motion to retract that then. Is it a motion or just?
I retract.
Just retract.
Retract your second.
I'll retract the second on that to discuss later.
And I retract my motion.
Okay. So having that taken care of, all in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing done. That's approved. Item three reports, three A, district administrator update. Chris Reiter.
Thank you. We have four items we're going to talk about tonight. I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Mizziak to give us an update on summer school as we are deep into the summer and where we're at with programming.
So we've completed four full weeks of summer school, and we've entered the last week. During the first week, we had a hundred and sixty-eight students who were enrolled in that session. The first week of summer school, we offer our one-week classes, and there were seven offerings during that class, or that session. During weeks two through three, we had three hundred and sixty-nine students who were enrolled. There are twenty different enrichment opportunities that we offer to our students during that time. We had a little hiccup with our outdoor games when the air quality became a little bit poor, but we were able to successfully transition our kids to inside, and our outdoor games didn't skip a beat when they moved indoors temporarily. We've had a lot of fun during summer school, and there's learning alongside of that as well. Our engineering class had a great time last week testing planes in the hallway. Our fishing class was extremely successful, and they caught lots of fish. And on top of that, this is the first year that we've offered breakfast in the morning, and on average, we serve about ninety students for breakfast each day.
Also, it's pretty busy at district office. We're in the middle of year-end reporting, so the, we closed out the fiscal year in the business office. Human Resources is working to create our staffing roster for DPI. Special education reporting is happening, and transfer student data in teaching and learning. So the district office, July is a pretty busy month when it comes to a lot of paperwork and getting ready for the upcoming year and closing out the previous year. Tonight, you'll hear from Ms. Alton Dorf about our preliminary budget. Today, the budget did pass, correct? So that budget is in effect, and Salton Dorf will talk about the impact it has on our district as well as our taxpayers. And then finally, a year ago, Mr. Pollock asked me at this table to look into online verification. Last week, we had transportation and athletics and activities opened through Skyward, and starting tomorrow, our actual online verification for all families will take place. We did a revamp and tried to make it as more streamlined process. More fees are built in right into the online verification, so families are not charged after the fact or throughout the school year. So a lot of kudos goes to Jeff Crawford, our new supervisor of IT, Julie Lee Sin, in instructional technology, and Melissa Timmerman, as they looked at the what was in place and looked at a lot of the parent concerns or feedback we got over the last couple of years, and then revamped that approach. So those of you watching at home with kids, as you verify, we look forward to hopefully a more streamlined approach, and any feedback you have on what's working or what's not, we ask that you reach out to the district office. And that's the update for the month of July.
Thank you. Sounds like a successful summer school. Appreciate the family and the staff that were able to adjust on the fly some of the weather issues. We'll move on to item three B, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, discipline data report. Dr. Chris Reiter.
Thank you. Before I start, if you look at the report on page two, or the first table, the information for Amy Bell is transposed. I was able to fix it in the boards packet, but for the audience viewing, the ISS data and the OSS data should be flipped. So in-school suspension data under Amy Bell should be two days, and OSS should be zero days, and Melissa will fix that in the packet moving forward. But I want those watching at home to be aware of that. I've compiled with the help of our principals some essential disciplinary data that we're going to be more strategic about and consistent with moving forward. I've shared this evening only the twenty-two, twenty-three data, as we have had historically different ways of reporting our discipline data. As you can see, I asked the principals to compile their data from either Skyward or Swiss, which is another database system we use at the elementary level, to outline number of bullying reports from parents at their school, number of detentions applicable, which is only at the secondary level, in-school suspension, total number of days, and out-of-school suspension. And then for Kennedy and Germantown High School, I asked that the DPI behavioral elements that we have to report in our civil rights report annually were outlined, so that you could see where that falls. And then other school rules violations, this is something we're going to be working on in the coming weeks as a leadership team related to how we're coding and reporting that out, because it's kind of a one-stop shop for any other violation. As you can see in the report, the high school has very specific defined terms, and Mrs. Guerin and Mr. Cole have been working with the high school administration to build some consistency, so we have similar reports, and we can track those specific instances, and they don't just fall in a general category of other school rules violations. So that's why there's an absence of Kennedy's information there, because that has not been a past practice. The goal with this report is to inform the board and the community of, you know, behavior violations that have taken place during the twenty-three, twenty school year, and then in the future, we'll build a year-on-year-after-year report, so it's comparable over time. And then you can see I've asked Mr. Nerdal to share GH athletic violations, and I've figured I'll get the question of what is conduct unbecoming, so I would share in our handbook that you approved last month, there's three categories for conduct unbecoming. That's flagrant misbehavior in a classroom, specifically academic dishonesty, disorderly conduct in or out of school where they're cited per state statute by law enforcement, or other flagrant misbehavior in the classroom or disrespect, which is disrespectful behavior towards another fellow student or a teacher that may lead to removal from a classroom. So you can see those violations that were added there. And then the last piece is the more itemized behavior from GHS related to those codes that they've identified as a school that we're going to work for some consistency K-12 related to. As I put in the background, the goal is really to not only collect the data, but then how are we acting on it, not only after we've collected it, but in the moment. Our building principals this summer will go through additional training with myself, Mr. Mizziak, and Mr. Noack related to bullying policy fifty-five seventeen oh one, our student anti-harassment policy fifty-five seventeen, and then continued education around Title IX and the rules and responsibilities of principals, mandatory reporting, and then our investigative processes related to Title IX and the federal regulations, as well as discussing and building, we're going to do some case study work with our principal team on, here's an example of something that may have happened in the past at GSD, or something that could happen, we've seen in other districts, what course of action would you take? So we'll have our principals break down case studies, and then work with us to walk through process, communication, and ultimately consequence, so we can build some consistency across the district K-12 when it comes to that, understanding the variance from elementary to middle to high school, and the severity of set issues. So with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
Just wondering for the vaping at the GH, GHS, GHS, is this sort of thing covered in a health class or something?
Yes. That's covered all the way back to DARE. That's a part of Officer Olson and Officer Laux's presentation, vaping's become more prominent in schools. I would say that that number's very low. Those are cases that students caught doing it, but that number's very low can relate it to our surrounding districts.
Yeah, my concern is, I think, smoking, the effects are well-known, but I think vaping is still kind of out there, and I think it's much worse than anybody knows.
Yeah, it's much highly, it's more addictive than regular old-fashioned cigarettes, if you will.
Right, right.
I would assume the ability to do it in the manner in which you ingest it is probably easier, more tempting to try to get away within a school environment rather than lighting up a cigarette or chewing tobacco of that sort.
And some of the vape cartridges that are sold have smells that smell like fruit or perfumes that it's hard to even confiscate at times, but that doesn't mean that, I think we have a great high school administrative team and middle school that work with our local law enforcement to educate and be proactive, but also, when there's reports, investigate, and ultimately, if something is confiscated, it's, that's the smoking gun.
The second table, discipline offense. I'm just trying to figure out which school that's for. Eight oh five on the attendance review would be the bar that sticks out to me.
Oh, that's purely high school data. That's the other school rules violation, so they track attendance review. That means that they had to meet with a student based on their attendance. Maybe they skipped a period, skipped an hour, or a full day.
It was a review with the student?
Yep, and sometimes family depending upon severity.
Does notice go out to a family you met with your student?
At five days, there's a message, I believe, through Skyward that there was a communicator, we met with Russ today in the second hour, a call, auto-call home. But then there's statutorily and per board policy, we send out a five-day letter when you've hit, or five-day absent letter, when you've hit five non-excused medical school days, and then ten invokes a ten-day letter, which then leads to a truancy meeting. And our social workers work with families as well with that, as well as our school counselors.
Sure.
And we've tightened up our attendance policy at the elementary, that we have had those type of meetings this past year as well. We need kids at school to learn, so.
Any other questions? I appreciate you drilling down, or at least presenting the data, and then drilling down into it and looking for patterns, and if we have the information, we might as well use it. So it's good to see reports like this, and I shouldn't say I'm excited to see the year-over-year, but it will help us understand and take action as needed, so.
It puts in context where we're doing well and where we need to improve, so the goal is to bring this every July to the board.
Fantastic. Do you have the opportunities to see the same data from your colleagues in surrounding areas?
It's discussed. The EPI behavioral elements, once they become, I just talked about that year-end reporting, those then become live in our state database system that we have local, we can see our others. But I know for a fact, Mr. Farren meets monthly with the Greater Metro Conference principals, and these are air-table topic discussion areas that they talk around. Where are you seeing, you know, when you look at those behavioral elements or even other school rule violations, what's on the uptick in your buildings? And it's a good comparative piece, but we don't have a formal report to this effect.
Okay. Just kind of one other comment. Electronic communication devices, that's our cell phone policy.
And Apple watches too, no?
Apple watches, earbuds, I believe, are at the area. I know several surrounding districts have looked at our policy, and I've probably been in communication with our district, and how are we achieving this, and is it effective?
Yeah.
One thing I do hear from the community in that regard is while we do implement it well, there is some inconsistencies within building that might be setting up some teachers that are probably pretty strict with it for failure in regards to some others possibly being a little lax in the environment or their application of enforcement. I don't know if there's plans to address that. Let's move that out.
Yeah, this report, after I got every principal's information, was then sent back to our principals. The whole packet was, we asked them to review what's going on, and we have a leadership meeting coming up soon. This will be at the essence. I talked about policies we're going to talk about, but then some of the discrepancies in how we can, again, build consistency from the bottom up and between each building.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, three C, public, twenty-two, twenty-three, public access usage and financials report. Dr. Chris Reiter and Brittany Alton Dorf.
I believe this report last came to you, Brittany, in two thousand and nineteen? Was it twenty? Two thousand and twenty, it last came to the board in review of what previous board packets have looked like, and working with Ms. Alton Dorf and the other directors. We wanted to make sure this is an annual report, similar to the last report that I just presented on, so that you're aware of what's going on, and we are, you know, a handful of years post-referendum, and many of the facilities like this that were part of that referendum are open to our public, and public voted in favor of that. So we wanted to give this evening a update. I'm going to walk through these slides. Any questions you have, specific, for either Brittany or I, or wait till the end? Obviously, our buildings opened to the public on May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, here at the high school, and those buildings are those spaces, and within our building are the fitness center, pool, and fieldhouse, and you can see that they're open twelve months a year, and there are hours of operation before this academic day and post the academic day to the public. And outlined is the fee structure. Students and staff with an ID are free, including new board members, and then community members showing verification of that they live within Germantown School District boundaries, our two dollars, and non-community members, four dollars. You can see in this bar graph, month after month, where we see more usage takes place in the afternoon, or at that seven o'clock and beyond time than our AM time. And you can see that the number one user of our facilities for public use are our students, and followed by staff, community, and then minimally non-community. And here are the locations, the fitness center, it's an interesting bar graph. You see the fitness center, May through September, are really high. I don't know if people are getting shape for the fall, and then they decide, you know, pick up their basketball game or track game, November through May twenty-three, as the fieldhouse increases in time. And those are winter months too, so there might be more basketball use and those type of things. And the pool stays pretty steady throughout the year with a slight uptick in August to twenty-two, and then just recently this spring. Revenue, our twenty-two, twenty-three income was two thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars, so that averages out to a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents per month. With that comes costs, our staffing. In the morning, we have a lifeguard, a fitness center monitor, and a door supervisor on duty. And then in the evenings, we have two to three people working between lifeguard, fitness center, monitor, and door supervisor, and there is a difficulty staffing lifeguards. Everyone that has an aquatic center of any sort is saying that there's less lifeguards. That's why we offer a lifeguarding class to get certification and hopefully bring them right on site. And then supplies and equipment are really, it relates to the pool, and maintaining that pool, making sure the chemicals are at the right level, and then obviously cleaning supplies throughout each of those three areas. And you see that average annual expense is thirty, almost thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's one quick question.
Yeah.
And it's probably evident, but mornings, three lifeguards, that's utilized three, we don't have three on duty at?
No, no.
Each morning, so right?
Three people, manning one in each station, yes. Yeah. Brittany, do you know offhand what is the lifeguard-to-swimmer ratio? I thought we just had that conversation the other day with Sarah.
Lifeguard.
Yeah.
I guess, but I thought conversation.
Yes, it sounds about right.
Okay.
Okay. And then in summary, obviously, our students is the most popular user of this facility, specifically high school students. Either they're getting here early to work out or have, participate in activity, or they're staying after school for those same things. The fieldhouse is the most used location, based on last year's data. Obviously, the evenings were the most popular time. I outlined the revenue. Our least popular users are non-community users, which would make sense. The least used location is the pool, and the least popular time is in the morning, and then outlines our total discussion. So as we look at this data, it's a question of how do we brand and market to build advertising, to draw people in, and incentivize the great spaces we have to those that are outside of that student or employee range, because that's where we're going to draw revenue from. The students and employees don't have a fee, so obviously, the revenue total is a lot lower if they were, had a fee, but they are students and employees of the district. Tom?
Given that expenses are almost thirty-five thousand and revenue is twenty-two sixty-six, other than marketing, are there any other plans to try to close that gap?
We might, we might do some questioning, like a survey sent out, as to why people don't use this facility. Is it the hours of operation? Is it, I don't know, that's the question. We have to get to the root cause. Why is it not being utilized? And then from there, that might build awareness through marketing to say, I didn't even realize I could come in and use the pool. And then from there, that might build awareness through marketing to say, I didn't even realize I could come in and use the pool at this time. I could come in and work out in the fitness center versus buying a gym membership, and it's only going to cost me two dollars a visit versus a, you know, a hundred dollars plus maybe, you know, gym membership or whatever it might be.
On the membership note, does that have potential exploration for us?
That could be a question we ask in a survey. What what's the likelihood you would, you know, buy a monthly membership at maybe a reduced cost than two dollars per visit? We can explore all those options.
I would, my suggestion, because I I think there's at least a small window of opportunity regarding membership, is to reach out to our friends that are located just down the road here, all these businesses, to see if they would be interested in making memberships available for their employees as reimbursement. See, and if, because before they get in, they're right here. They don't have to travel very far.
Yeah. I do know that in in southeastern Wisconsin, I'm sure it's nationally, but I can't say with, you know, a hundred percent determination, but gym memberships in general are down post-COVID as people were home, bought apps, learned how to did those type of things at home, and now, do I need to go back? But that's not an excuse, but I think asking if that was an option or availability, not only to the community, but to local businesses, that might draw more revenue and more usership.
I know a lot of the gyms have stopped offering, like, fitness classes. That might be something I'll look into if you have any community members that would be interested in taking, like, zumba. There's lifting classes that they can take, where you'd have group classes, and that might be a way to get some more revenue.
For sure.
It was involved in one interesting discussion in the community from a physical therapy standpoint. This particular person worked at at a center, and she had mentioned that she often refers people to, I believe it's a noise park in Milwaukee, but she's located in our backyard. Obviously, I informed her our pool's open. Go ahead and refer as many as you'd like to utilize our pool. They don't have one on site. But that might be a potential, looking into centers like that, that might be looking for an aquatic center for their patients and recommendation at a low cost, given that their patients typically are cycled in and out.
Yep.
Just another potential.
Yeah, I think the marketing is, could be done to raise awareness. I just don't think people have, are very aware of the facilities we have over there. But this year, and you touched on it in particular, when I was over in the rec center, I've seen a sign up saying that the pool will only be open Mondays due to lifeguard shortages. And my understanding is our requirement is eighteen years old.
Correct.
I don't believe that's the way it is for Coney Perks and such. Is there a reason we do eighteen? Can we drop that down to seventeen so that pool is manned and open?
I mean, we can look into, we'll have to look at what, how insurance is laid out for that and liability to that, yeah.
Because, like I said, we have a sign up. You can do all the marketing in the world, but if they walk through those doors and the pool's closed. So, and if we have a life-saving course that we offer here, and you can only do it when you're eighteen, those kids are done with high school and off to college. So even if we drop it to seventeen, I think we'll have more students working there.
And, yeah, and it's a matter of when they take that course. It's an elective and physical education, and where that falls in their their course completion as well. Thank you.
Anything else? If no, we'll move on. Item three D, Performing Arts Center update, Ms. Heather Palowski. I believe she has to come down from the command center.
Hello, hello. Thank you for being patient. So I just needed to give you a quick update here. At the end of the year, we did one at the beginning, and then you guys asked me to come back to the end of the year and review some stuff. So I'm going to go over kind of the highlights of the past year, some numbers, and then kind of what we're looking at for next year. If you want to go to the next slide. I roughly broke down the number of hours that we're looking at for the PAC in terms of of usage. It's not all-encompassing, but to give you guys a rough idea, a good majority of our time is rentals here. And then right behind that is the drama department, which of course spends a lot of time in here, followed by the band and the choir, and a lot of other minor events. We can move forward. We had three major shows with the high school drama department this year. I wanted to highlight Clue, and even though we we missed a day due to power outage, we still made the highest attendance for that show for a play at the high school. So I was very proud of that. And we had two other very successful shows. Steel Magnolias was always meant to be a very small intimate show, and we had only three hundred seats available for the entire thing. So we're really happy about that. We can head on to the next one. Some of our large rentals we have in here, CYT is a twice-annual renter for us. They did Suzacole in the fall, which was great. They have about about eighty to a hundred kids that perform in their shows. There was about five performances. There's school day shows as well that are available for the public to buy tickets for. We also do the Nutcracker semiannually. You can go on to the next ones. We had our first dance competition here, which is a major rental for us in March. And then, of course, the other show CYT did was The Music Man, right after our musical. I roughly broke down what we're looking at for our expenses and revenues based on what I could, you know, find on Skyward and all of that information. So you can see our rental revenue going up. We are probably maxing out unless we want to kick out some of the smaller renters and take on the bigger ones. I tend to take it, you know, as they come. I don't know that we can fit many more major rentals in the space because it's just constantly being used. So, yep, and then we've got, we did our community series for the first time this year. We kind of had to hold off when the PAC opened because of COVID. We didn't, you know, really have a good opportunity for starting community shows. This would be akin to when you go to Cedarburg and you see a live performance of jazz or violin concerto or orchestra. You have to pay those musicians to come in, so we were trying to keep it low-budget because we're starting off. I know this is also meant to be a community space. We want to be doing shows that the community want to see. Based on the numbers I saw, I think we did the best we could with marketing. I think it's just a time thing of getting people aware that this is here. Everybody that did come to these shows had everything positive to say, but I keep hearing, we didn't even know this was here. So just to be aware of that, we can move on. So I did break down what our expenses versus revenues were. A lot of that, you know, just due to not good enough attendance. I'm confident it'll get better over time, but that's something we need to be mindful of. My hope next year, moving into the next year, is to just take the attendance numbers we had the previous year and what we made in revenues for that, and to not spend any more on that for the upcoming year. And if it grows, great. If it doesn't, maybe the community here in Germantown isn't looking for that. But I'm hopeful that they are. I think they are. Move up. So right now, in the PAC this week, is our summer drama camp. We have about twenty-one students ages eight to fifteen that are here. They're learning about dance, acting, props, all of that. So you can see some of the decorations that are out for that. We also have coming up in August, our Family Film Fridays. Those are free movies. Anybody can come see them. We have concessions for sale. Kids come in their jammies. It's a great time. And then we have all three of our drama shows coming up for the high school for next year, so write those dates on your calendar so you can come in. Make sure you check out our website, please, everybody at home. That's where you can find all information about buying tickets. You can also, you know, contribute to your favorite, you know, band or choir here if you're looking for that. And you can find our latest event info. Our Facebook page rocks. You can find all current information and pictures on our shows. So we're doing really well with that. And you can also contact the box office at any time, phone or email, and I will answer them usually within twenty-four hours. Maybe over a weekend it'll take a little bit longer, but I can get back to you. Any questions?
Family, now it's working. Family Film Fridays, is that a fundraiser fundraiser for the Grand Piano?
Well, the the piano campaign has enough funds. That's great. I just have to find time to go buy it. It's been a little busy yet. So the piano campaign is basically complete. So it is, we don't, we really only make money off of concessions, which is some, but it's not a hugely significant amount. So I did have that conversation with someone in finance about when we do shows like that, and we obviously want to charge people for the concessions, the little bit of profit that there is. Where do we want that to go to? And probably moving forward, I don't think it's decided yet, but probably moving forward. If the choir is the one coming in and providing the people to run that concessions, you know, they would probably be getting that bit of money for that night because it's all volunteer-run.
Okay. And that, the science program you had, I wanted to go to that, but it was during the school day, during a weekday, and that seemed kind of odd to me. I was wondering if it was geared towards field trips coming in here?
Yes, it was.
Is that what it was?
Yes. So the idea, a lot of schools do these daytime shows where instead of, you know, you get your family of five people coming in, you get a school bus of forty kids coming in. You get five or six schools, and you get a lot of kids in here for a field trip show. It's educational. The other two were evening shows.
Well, there were some evening shows for that?
Well, the other two community shows were evening. He was just a daytime one. Yeah, yeah.
And was it open to the public also?
Yeah, absolutely. We did have some special needs groups came in. We had a lot of homeschooler families come in. But like with the other two shows that we did, we're kind of, we're starting from scratch on the marketing side, and theaters that do things competitive to this, they've been open a lot longer. They have community organizations. They've been doing marketing for a long time. I think we really just need to work on building that, but also I don't feel comfortable spending a lot of money on the marketing either. I think we just need to be conservative in it and keep hitting it hard. I do print brochures here. I send out a lot of flyers all over the place. We do the best we can. I'm open to new ideas all the time, but that's, we do the best we can, but, you know, people will just have to start coming, you know, and start spreading the word. Tell your friends. Anything else?
I did notice it looks like one of our elementary schools used the facility throughout the year.
Yes, one, one time, one event.
Yeah. Do we, did the other three reach out and we just weren't available for them? Or was it just a specific type of unit that worked best to run it here for that school?
Yeah, so that specific case. We have had a couple other things. What it, what they are sometimes requesting is to use the PAC as their fifth-grade graduation space. And this, MacArthur has done it, I think, every year now. I think Rockfield did it once or twice, and Amy, Amy Bell did it once as well. It just kind of depends. Those fifth-grade graduations are typically being run by a different parent group every year. If I were to give my strong opinion, they want the busiest dates of the year at the end of May, which is very competitive, and I can fit some of them in. But realistically, offering the PAC consistently for elementary school events is just not feasible. But I fit them in when we can.
Thank you.
I'm a big fan of theater, so I'm excited for the plays that are coming up. But do you have anything that would be like an annual pass that somebody could buy instead of having to go and do each specific event?
Every individual one. I I have been interested in doing a season pass. We could definitely arrange that for, like, the high school drama because it is all one unit. If we wanted to make that more extensive, say, for our major shows, like The Kids from Wisconsin is a band event. The Choir Cabaret, we could probably round those in as well. It's just consistency. And sometimes at the beginning of the year, when we would offer those memberships, say, August and September, we might not know for sure for sure that we're doing those events later on in the year yet. It's usually pretty sure, but sometimes the contracts aren't signed yet. So I think we're just looking for consistency. So maybe another year yet, and then we'll be able to start offering those memberships.
Right. Even if you just did the plays that the school is putting out?
Would that be helpful? Yeah. Now that's a possibility. We're capable of that.
Well, Heather, thank you for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. We know you showcase this facility well, so.
Thank you.
Please keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Item four, citizen comment. I have nobody sign up at this moment. If nobody would like to come forward, we will move on. Item five, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second. A motion from Tom for A through D, and a second from Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have that approved. Uncle five, five E, approval of consent vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent payment vouchers as presented and reviewed.
Second.
Tom with the motion for E, and Kim with the second. Any discussion?
I think there was a question, and Brittany's ready to tell us what that was. You know, it's what we normally do in finance.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Sure. I received a few questions. One of the questions was regarding an invoice or a check to NELCO for camera installation. There were two entries on the voucher report, but one check for the vendor. One of them was for five thousand eight, eighty-five dollars even, and the other one was fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. The question was that one of them, the five thousand dollars, was labeled for Kennedy Middle School, but the other one, the fourteen thousand, didn't have a location. So the question was asked, were they both for Kennedy Middle School, or was it for another location? And the fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars for camera installations was for the high school. So we did get approved to purchase and then install from the board, so those were two, the two installation locations that we had.
Any other questions?
I have one, one other question. Sorry? The other question I was received was regarding a check for professional interpreting enterprise. There were multiple invoices, one check again, and they are for, if we need interpreters for, for conferences, if parents would come in and they are deaf, we have to hire an interpreter for them. Open houses, again, for parents. There is, if we have an, we have an interpreter service, which is this. If that person is gone, we have to hire a sub, so that was another one of the expenses. So it's either for students or parents if if they're deaf.
And that can be IEP meetings, that could be a school performance when it's for a parent.
Correct.
So it's it's throughout the year when there's a parent function that we need an interpreter.
Those are the only two questions I received.
If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. Five E, approval for donations.
F.
Sorry, F, approval for donations.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations and thank the generosity, the donors for their generous. I'll make a motion to approve the donations and thank the generosity, the donors for their generosity.
A second.
Time with the motion to approve the donations. Kim with a second. Any discussion?
I think we've agreed to always read the names, you know, in the full board.
I'm happy to do that.
Chris has volunteered.
I'd like to thank MacArthur PTA for two donations, one for an art drying rack, $1,068, and payment of MacArthur field trips throughout the school year for $5,881.70. Additionally, the GHS Environmental Club for a $2,500 donation towards the courtyard project. The memorial for Pat Schaaf, where I rest, for $1,000 towards the GHS courtyard construction project. And thank you to Keener Insurance Solutions for $250 towards our Germantons girls swim and dive team.
Appreciate their generosity and all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item six, policy committee. Item six A, June 26, 2023, committee meeting update. Tom, take it away.
All right, I'll just cover kind of all these in, in a group here. The committee met twice in the last month. We finalized two policies that we'll bring forward from the June meeting. That's policy 5112, our entrance age policy. In this case, the administration's recommending changes to the policy to reflect the district's stance on delayed entrance to five-year-old kindergarten. And at that meeting, we also discussed policy 7250. This is our policy that covers naming rights for school sites, buildings, athletic fields, or structures. We've had some big donations recently, such as donation towards our courtyard and greenhouse project at the high school. And based on that, the administration felt that it was time to make some changes to better define some of the naming rights criteria. The other policies got pushed to our July 10th meeting because we needed some clarification from legal or from the administration. So that took us to July 10th. There we covered policy 7510, which is our facility use policy. Policy committee will still be working on this policy in the future, but there are some time-sensitive items, such as when specific priority groups can start booking our facilities. So for that reason, we're bringing forward the policy with some changes now. And policy committee will bring it forward again in the future, once we update the priority groups. At that July 10th meeting, we also covered policy 8800, which is our policy on religious activities and observances. These are changes from Neola based on recent U.S. Supreme Court decision in Kennedy versus Bremenchen School District. Neola has recommended that we adopt it as written. They're saying that any modifications could expose the district to a constitutional challenge. Couple key items from the policy are that staff are expected to avoid circumstances where a staff member's expression of religious views could be reasonably construed as an endorsement or an approval of the message by the school or district. And the policy also states that, quote, "Nothing in this policy prohibits teaching about various religions and religious practices in a manner consistent with any adopted district course curriculum," end quote. Regarding this specific policy, patriotic observances were removed, and they were placed into a new policy that we'll be bringing forward tonight. That's policy 8802. Couple things in this policy. States that the flag of the United States shall be raised above each school during all school sessions and that the staff is authorized to lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance or National Anthem. Also included is an option that the district may offer a moment of silence to commemorate a significant event. I'll stop there. That's kind of my background on the last two meetings. Are there any questions? All right, that takes us to board item six C. Discussion and action to approve modifications to district policies 5112 and 7250. The motion from committee is to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board, policies 5112 and 7250 as presented.
Being a positive recommendation, we do not need a motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, moving on. Board item six D is discussion and action to approve modifications to district policy 7510.01. Policy committee brings forward a motion to approve the updates and modifications to district policy 7510.01, community use of school facilities, except priority three and priority four groups in the priority user group classification section. Priority three and priority four groups will remain as last revised from April 25, 2022.
Being a positive recommendation, we don't need a motion. All in, any discussion? Just want to clarify a point. The committee does really plan to revise those two groups.
Yes, policy committee will be working on priority groups three and four the next time we need.
Okay. So, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And that takes us to board item six E, discussion and action to approve district policy 8800 and the addition of policy 8802. Policy committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation, the updates to policy 8800 and the addition of policy 8802.
Positive recommendation, do we need a motion? Any, or any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It is all from policy committee.
If I could just add, I'd like to thank the policy committee. Though there's only five policies here, there was a lot of time and due diligence. Neola actually commented to me that your committee reads every word, and I think that's extremely important when you're thinking of policy and the short-term and long-term effect it has on everyone that it governs. So thank you for, though we had multiple meetings and they were lengthy, I appreciate that you do your due diligence around policy.
Thank you. Item number six, sorry, item number seven, personnel committee. That's me. We met July 10th. We received several reports from administration surrounding the OPEP study, which is our post-employment benefits. Admin have met with the National Insurance Service. And since our meeting, have met with the second, third-party company, Key Benefits, focusing. As they continue to focus on the shift from the current plan, that is, to a plan that's more both fiscally responsible and attractive to district employees, the work around this shift will continue and maybe assisted with potentially hiring one of these two consultant groups to assist us as we move forward. For the compensation study, we received a report. District administration have met with a third party, and it seems they've come to the conclusion that they should be able to handle this work in-house as savings to the district. Dr. Reuter and Mr. Novak have presented a comprehensive process and report in the manner in which they're going to continue, continue and embark on this study and will continue to report back to us. I don't know if either of you would have anything to add to that.
I think we're, the timeline states that August, so it won't get going in August as we close out this past year. Start to look at comparables and identify those comparables. And like we said, each month, we'll come back with a report to the committee of where we're at.
I would recommend for anyone that's watching, interested, to take a look at that meeting packet. Both, both the OPEP study information and specifically the compensation study have a specific timeline laid out. Goal intent are also laid out as well as data collection via internal matrix, as well as input from employees and workers alike. Not to go into all that, but it is a in-depth piece of information if you're interested, specifically the employees. I think you'll see some access points that be part of that process as we move forward. We received a staffing update from Mr. Noack. And we actually, that was on our consent agenda. It was just a piece of information that he's looking to bring forward to that committee as often as we meet, so the board can be apprised in regards to staffing flows, either new hires, resignations, patterns that we're seeing. So we look forward to continuing to have that report provided for us. We had two action items on that agenda, and we are bringing forward with a positive recommendation, with a positive recommendation to approve the modification to the employee handbook as presented in this packet. It is lengthy, similar to some of the policy updates. Just highlight some of the sections that have been addressed. The discussion was fairly long at the committee level. I would once again refer people back to viewing that meeting to have a totality of better understanding of the discussion around it. But items that are being updated are regarding district-owned property, the use of social media by employees, employees' use of email, employees' use of issued ID badges and lanyards, personal appearance, political activity, time off, modifications to workspaces, the addition of union activity, and sick leave. We have one more, as well as personal leave. Does anyone have any questions or does everyone have time to review the modifications that were made to the employee handbook? No questions? Seeing no questions, a positive recommendation. We do not need a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The second action item we had was surrounding building, building subs. Mr. Noack presented us with a plan in regards to bringing in the third-party four building subs that would report to our district daily. Two to be split between the four elementary schools and one at each KMS and GHS. It does look as if that would, the proposal or estimation for cost would be approximately $25,000 more to the district. The report did contain, and the committee did have discussion about the positive ROI on that investment as far as building out consistency within the schools, for the students, for the staff, as well as assisting our current staff and not having to fill quite as many gaps. I believe there was also a concern with these sub shortage. This would help us secure some consistency onsite. Am I missing anything?
No, just, I would add, it's a practice that's used in many schools and school districts in the area of not the nation. And TOC recommends it as a means to helping our, the fill rate improve.
And I think that if you asked any of our teachers at any of our locations or building principals, they could identify those people that are constantly coming back and they hope every day they're there. This gives more incentive to lock them in as a building level substitute and feel a part of the staff, but they're not under our, our insurance and other benefits, but they're, they're someone we can rely on and count on.
Yeah, I would add too, something we talked about after is it does give us a nice opportunity to see the, these specific substitutes in a more concentrated way in the event that we want to bring them on as teachers. You know, many teachers begin as building principals, I'm sorry, building substitutes.
I would note, there is a review that'll be done mid-semester, right? Not mid-semester, but mid-school year?
That's right.
On regards to the ROI that we're receiving from this to ensure that it's money well-spent. The intent is that it sounds like it will be a good asset for our district and the intent to possibly, if it is, we could see an expansion of it in the future to each six, or one for each school.
And again, we're, they're not under contract. As a salaried employee, they're only paid if they sub. The incentive is to sub consistently because it's at a higher rate when you're designated as a building substitute.
And so we're not taking them on as a direct employee.
Correct.
They are a third-party service. I believe a lot of the feedback in that meeting was positive around this. And I think the key is building that consistency for the district. It's what we've been working on over this last year, so.
I've heard that word at least 20 times this evening, I think.
Yeah, so continuation on that path, which the board has asked, so. I will see. Committee brings forth with a positive recommendation approval of hiring four building substitutes through the teacher, through teacher-on-call with a daily rate of $160 per day for the 23-24 school year. And it's a positive recommendation. I don't have the emotion. Any discussion?
Yes, just like in the interest of transparency, to note that my wife has worked through teachers-on-call here in the district and may work through teachers-on-call in the future, and therefore I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Tracy. I appreciate that. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And one abstention.
Abstain.
Thank you, Tracy. Item eight, new business. Discussion and action to approve the Fall '23 coaching and advisor contracts. Ms. Siri Inertl and Mr. Mike Noack.
Thank you. Ms. Inertl is not with us tonight. In her absence, I'll share with you the list of fall coaching and advising contracts to bring forward. They are listed for both the high school and KMS. As you look at them, you'll also note that there are still a number of TBDs as the AD is working to make sure that those are filled. They also are noted with the respective percentages of the, I guess we'd call it base pay that's appropriated, and then the amounts that the contracts are specified for. There's two times that we do this. We bring the fall contracts and then later on, like late fall, we bring winter and spring contracts as well.
I will note that the two newest co-curriculars that are approved by the board, I believe last month at KMS, are not on here because in the first year, they're going to be hourly positions so that we have a better understanding of totality of supervision around those, those co-curriculars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fall '23 coaching and advisor contracts as presented.
Second.
Motion for approval by Tom and a second from Tracy. Any discussion? See, I have one question in regards to the percentage that we're seeing on, in the packet. That is percentage of the budget we issue to this, or what is that a percentage of?
There's a, and I referred to it as a base rate that doesn't necessarily equate specifically to base teacher pay, but it's a base amount that was used some years ago as a base pay for teachers. It's, it's that amount. That amount hasn't been adjusted. I think, I want to say, a handful of years ago, there was some rounding that occurred. The amounts used to be, you know, very different, and there was some rounding to kind of ease that a bit.
Do we find that our, the pay in this area is? Do we find that our, the pay in this area is consistent with surrounding districts? Are we in competition with surrounding districts to fill these positions?
Yeah, it, it, it's our intent and Ms. Nurdal's intent to, uh, bring forward a comparative study in the months, if not the year ahead. Um, my brief commentary on that is that, um, there is some variability. We're not, uh, we're definitely not at the bottom of, of the, of the chart relative to where we fall. Um, but at the same time, there are some districts that pay considerably more. So we will bring that forward.
Yeah, I think we'll bring that in, in the winter months and some of that too. You have to look a little deeper into the data because we might pay more for a specific sport for being a head coach, but we have less assistant coaches than a surrounding district. Or another district might have less assistant coaches than we do. And so you have to look at that total picture versus just flat rate.
Yeah.
And Ms. Nurdal and Mr. Noack started collecting that information. A lot of districts are looking into that, so there's been a lot of surveying to kind of get some of those comparables out to better understand is, it's hard to fill some of these coaching positions when putting a lot of hours in and it's the compensation at the end of the day worth the time and energy.
And for the T, uh, to be determined, if we don't fill those spots, what?
Um, there, there's different things that have occurred. In some situations, a given coach has handled multiple roles, um.
He may not run something.
Yeah.
I believe last year we did not run cheerleading and I believe it was boys' dive. We have low participation. And so it, the decision was made not to run it because we could not find a culture and advisor.
I'd say we'll exhaust efforts to make sure we can try to have somebody in place.
Is that, I have my other question. Participation, is that weighted as to where we would make an expenditure versus not?
Yeah, and that's also going to be part of that compensation study. What is the floor to run specifically co-curricular sports for the most part? Run with the exception of a few of them in the last, um, couple of years, but we'll, we'll set up, what is the floor? And then what's a ceiling when it comes to adding a second advisor or assistant coaches? Versus cut, non-cut sports as well as clubs that might have very high participation rate and there's one advisor and another cut club that may have very low and there's one advisor. So we have to set some parameters around them.
Then are these an independent contract for these employees outside of their teaching contract? And I guess with that, I would ask, is that approached? I'll just, approached differently in regards to, um, issues that arise in one role versus the other? Or are they applied across?
I would say if, if the, depending upon what the issue is, if it crosses over into their teaching role, then that's, that's, um, addressed together. But first and foremost, um, everyone that's on here that was hired to be a teacher, that's their first job. Coaching and co-curricular is their second. Um, and then we look at it case by case if there is concern of performance or conduct.
We always look to fill these with internal staff prior to reaching out to community or surrounding.
Correct. Research is pretty clear to have the people that work with the kids every day be those advisors, coaches. There's a stronger connection.
Sure. One last question. This is a complete list of, and I'll call it, com- competition-based activities. Will we see a secondary list or a different list for, um, our other clubs and activities?
Clubs and activities are on here. I'm trying to think other examples, are you talking, um, can you?
We, we have advisors for lots of different clubs that are not competition-based. Environmental club would be one of them and not singling them up for any particular reason other than it was at the top of my head. I don't, didn't see that on here.
Yeah, those who would have to come back because this, what was provided tonight is what you're approving. So we couldn't issue a contract unless it's approved.
I'm just remembering back to last year, I think we approved them in two different phases. You're, you're remembering correctly. Okay, that's the standard, that's the one we do. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything.
It happened last year, I don't know if it's the standard, but.
Well, it'll happen this year.
This is what, uh, Ms. Nurdal is recommending for moving into the fall. That will either start this summer already and then be fall for sure in session.
Sure, but we have clubs that'll run year-round. Year-round or at least as far as the school year is concerned, they're, they're not on this list, so.
Yeah. We'll get clarification on that, um, but there is a subsequent meeting that will be occurring before winter sports. So if, there could be something there. I get it.
Yeah, we have clubs that start day one or actually participate year-round. Um, and like I said, not to sing them up, but environmental club is one of those similar clubs to it. This appears to be a complete list of our competition. Is that term loosely based clubs or activities and not necessarily some of those others?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're going to receive that at some point.
We can run it through her and, um.
Most likely bring it back in August.
Yeah, bring it back.
That's going to be my ask is that we have it before the start of the year.
Yep, because you approved last month the co-curricular handbook. It outlined all of those non-competition or, as you're speaking, or year-round things.
Okay. Any other discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Any opposed? Moving on, eight, B, discussion and action to approve the 23-24 elementary KMS and GHS student handbook. Chris Royer.
Thank you. Um, I've had the principals working this last month to look at their, um, student handbooks for the 23-24 school year. They've provided a cover page here that outlines the edits. And then in the packet is a link to the current, the previous, um, handbook. In future, we will edit these handbooks similar to how the employee handbook and policy is edited and so that you can see additions and subtractions in red. This has been previous practice of how it's been done, um, but we'll change it so we have, again, more consistent on editing of district documents. But you can see that elementary did not have any proposed changes. Ken- Kennedy's changes, um, overall are, they've been working closely with their high school, again, to build a six-12 consistent model language and practice when it comes to accountability to.
... sent in 22-23 based on the previous year expenditures. And now it's going to be 33.3%, which will then reduce the amount of money we have to transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27. That's the effect on it. We're getting more aid, we're not necessarily spending more money. It will just reduce the transfer from Fund 10. So that is currently built in the budget based on our best estimate of what we spent in 22-23. Sparsity aid we do not receive, so that's not part of our budget. Um, number eight, um, talks about, um, bilingual and bicultural programs, high-cost special education aid and high-cost transportation aid. The only one we receive is high-cost special education aid. And that is based on if we have a high-cost special education student, we have to fill out their services, how much they, um, cost for us to educate them. We submit that. Anything over the $30,000 mark, we could get a reimbursement the following year. So that's, if you don't fill it out as a district, you can't get it. So we do fill it out, um, and then we usually receive, I believe I have it in here, approximately the $30,000 range for any student that we have over the $30,000 mark, if that makes sense. So that is currently based on previous-year students. It has not been adjusted in the budget that you see today. And then, um, number nine is transportation aid, which I briefly talked about before. Um, for every student that rides one of our buses, they have to ride one time a year, we receive aid for them. And it's based on how many miles they live from their school. So, um, this is, uh, a change for, uh, students that live 12, in the 12-plus miles category. Um, currently in 2022-23, we had four students. So, um, the change would be minimal for us. So in this, today's budget, you do not see that adjustment. Um, finally is, uh, school library aids. This is in every single year. Every single year they take the school library aids, this is actually additional, but they take what schools did not spend the previous year and then they redistribute it in January. So usually every January I come to the board for a budget adjustment, which basically says we've received more library aid, um, so the board needs to approve an adjustment on the expenditure and the revenue side. So again, this will happen in January as it does every year. One of the areas that it, they did not mention in this, um, 10-point list is, um, open enrollment. Um, when a student lives in our district but chooses to go to another district, our aid goes to that, or a portion, excuse me, a portion of our aid goes to the other district and vice versa. If the student lived there and attends here, their portion of their aid would come to us. Those numbers have increased from the previous year. Um, they're approximately for regular ed students, um, $8,600 and for special education students, approximately $13,500. Another area that's in this same category is vouchers. Um, private schools that are in our school district, um, have been receiving vouchers, which doesn't necessarily take away from, we're the pass-through. So property taxpayers are taxed a certain dollar amount. We receive it, but then it goes to the, the private schools. So we don't get any of the funds. And then, um, that has increased from the current year. So, for example, the current year is $8,400 for kindergarten through eighth and it's going to $9,500. Uh, the current year for, um, high school students, grades nine through 12, is $9,045 and it's going to $11,993. And then finally, special education, it is currently $13,076 and it is going to be increased to 4,000, or 14,671. So again, what we have built in the budget is the best information that we have. It will change, but, um, I'm asking the board to approve the preliminary budget today. Or I can answer any questions.
Any questions? I'll make the motion to approve the. Giving everyone else a moment. Um, some clarification around the budget that was passed and its impact on our district. $325 per pupil, does that impact our tax levy to our constituents? Or to the citizens of the district?
The answer is yes. But because the aid is also increasing, it's not the full dollar amount being impacted on our property taxpayers?
From this district, not from the state coming back?
Correct, so the revenue limit is the whole of property taxes and state aid. If our state aid on number, excuse me, number three did not increase, the full impact would go towards our property taxpayers, so the answer is yes. But because state aid is estimated to increase 27%, a portion of that will be, um, on the burden of our taxpayers.
So what you're proposing is to take the $325 plus the additional to raise it to 400 or $504 to hit the $11,000 cap per pupil?
Correct, and, correct. Um, we don't get the choice not to, um, unless we under levy. And if you under levy, you can't get that back.
I think that's part of what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, sorry.
I think, I think just that discussion right there. I think it helps citizens understand, so they are going to see a increase on their bill.
Well, I believe that they're going to see an increase on their bill because property values are going up is, is long, as well as a portion of this. Um, our mil rate, which is our, um, our property taxes per thousand-dollar value of your home. So if your house value increases, it's obviously going, you're going to pay more property taxes. Um, our mil rate is estimated to decrease slightly from the previous year.
And an edit or veto that was made to the, uh, budget itself in regards to 23-24 on that raise of $325 was changed to read instead of the 20-23, 20-24 years in the annual budget, to read 2024. Or, um, 23. The edit was to remove the 20 before 2023 and the 20 before 2024. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Did I edit something?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The governor.
You're saying the governor's veto to.
So the governor's veto states that the $325 per student for 23-24, our max would be $11,000, correct? Then next year, they're going to add $320, $325 to that $11,000 every single year after that?
Correct, due to this, due to his edit to the budget for the next 400 years. Theoretically, obviously, it's a, by annual budget, you can't budget forward. But as it stands, as signed today, a $325 increase.
This year and next year.
And every year going forward.
Correct, and, and, and it's locked in for this year and next year for sure. That can't change. He has it built in for the next 400 years, but come 25-27, if I'm saying that correctly.
Correct.
It could be adjusted.
The budget will be up for review.
Yes.
At that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But as it stands, $325 per year, every year, reoccurring.
Which would be great.
I would disagree with that strongly. I would actually classify.
Oh, are you talking, I'm talking, I'm talking as, as a school district, not as necessarily a taxpayer, sorry.
But as a taxpayer, I would classify it as reckless and arrogant in the manner in which he vetoed that budget. Uh, the $325 increase will go a long way, really $504 increase that our district will be able to apply. Will go a long way to continuing to manage our expenses. But it does it on the taxpayer's dollar.
Correct.
And the way he approached it, um, is, once again, I would classify as reckless and arrogant, um, to, to the taxpayers of the state.
I was looking at it from the school district perspective.
I, I understand. Any other comments or questions? Is that all in favor of the motion?
The motion to approve the 2023-2024 preliminary budget.
Second.
Eric with the motion, Tom with the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Move on to item eight, D, discussion and action to approve 100 replacement Apple iPads. Ms. Nurdal.
100 of our current Apple iPads lease agreement was up with the vendor that we received them from. It was a four-year lease. Um, the iPads did have to go back. So we are asking to replace those 100 iPads at $294 each, um, for a total of $29,400. I do want to add in there that we did have to, um, when your lease is up, um, you can either purchase the iPads, depending on how the lease is written. Um, if you don't purchase them, you would have to pay for the damages of them. Jeff Crawford in our technology department did look into it. We did purchase the iPads from the vendor, um, but they still had to be sent back. So we purchased them for $11,000, but we sold them to a scrap company for $15,000. So, um, we received four, excuse me, fourth, um, an average of $4,000 from that. So that will go towards the, the $29,400. We will still see an expense of $29,400, but you'll see a revenue of the, the $15,000. I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Is that, and I will take the motion.
The motion to approve the purchase of Apple iPads from Apple Incorporated for a total of $29,400 and charge the appropriate capitalization and lease accounts in the general fund.
Second.
Second.
Kim with the motion, Tom with the second. Any discussion? I want to just ask, we did, did we attempt to find a different vendor, or at least have comparables drawn in regards to this expense?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to item eight E. Discussion, action, approve twenty-two, twenty-three, Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Trust deposits.
In front of you tonight, I have on approval to make a deposit into our capital improvement trust of one, sorry, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I want to go through a little history of what a capital improvement trust is and the purpose of it, so the board understands a little more of what, what they may be approving tonight. So we have a Fund Forty-One, which is our capital expansion fund. That is brought to the board annually. It's a five-year plan, which is, the majority of it is asphalt and roofs, but there's some other projects that we have throughout our school district that we plan each year. The budget is around a hun, or five hundred thousand dollars for that, and it keeps growing by fifty thousand dollars each year. That's part of the revenue limit we spoke about before at the other agenda item. This is a little different. This is Fund Forty-Six. Fund Forty-Six is what they're calling a trust, but it's not necessarily a trust. It's a separate bank account, but there's a legal document that calls it a trust because you can only use it for the items that you, you have on your capital improvement plan. You have to have a, a ten-year capital improvement plan, which was submitted to DPI when the board put its initial deposit into the trust in December of two thousand twenty. There are rules around Fund Forty-Six. One, if you open your trust, which we did in two thousand twenty, we put a dollar in there just to open it because you cannot spend any money out of your trust until it's been opened for a five-year period. You can't put a dollar in and go spend a dollar. So we did put a dollar in, we created the trust just to get the time clock ticking. One other thing about Fund Forty-Six, it is helpful when it comes to shared cost and property taxes. So usually, shared cost is based on an expenditure of the previous year. If for some reason we would save money in our general fund in Fund Ten, and we save every year, and then ten years from now we spend a million dollars on something, we receive a bump in our state aid that one year. And then the next year, because we did not spend that million dollars, the state aid would go down, property taxes would go up. So being able to fund, I'm going to just give an, an example of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year, you are putting money towards your shared cost each year, so it's not going like this, and your property taxes and state aid aren't jumping around. So Fund Forty-Six was created to help shared costs over a period of time instead of expenses, large expenses at certain periods of time. So I am asking to continue to fund our capital improvement account, putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it, and it will be booked back to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
We, we look at this as an investment for the future. As we build this Fund Forty-Six, it'll allow us to do work and long-term capital work within the district that we would not have to go to referendum for, or, as Ms. Altenorf said, dip into fund balance, and then we have escalating taxes throughout the district. This is where we want to utilize this as the district has not to, to be a place that we make a concerted effort year after year to build for the future.
Just a couple of clarifying questions, was anyone else have some? You said it started in two thousand twenty, so we're three years into this, we're two years out from our five-year mark. Is that five-year mark for dollars contributed, each time contributed, or just as the fund has matured at five years?
The, the trust, correct.
So we're not land-locking dollars in there each contribution for five years?
Yeah.
It's, has that matured to five years?
Correct.
There are no other questions, or take the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the deposit of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the capital improvement trust bank account, Fund Forty-Six, for future district capital projects.
Second.
Eric, was that you with the second? Tracy with the motion, Eric with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight F, discussion, action, approve the twenty-three, twenty-four academic standards. Mr. Jake Mizziak.
So I would like to make a motion to table this for tonight and kick it to the TNL committee for further review of the standards before we would approve them.
Second.
And Kim with the motion. And Eric with a second. To move this to teaching and learning for further review.
Mr. Mizziak, do you have any clarification on the statute from the conversation earlier in the meeting?
So earlier tonight, there was a question about the state statute. So in the background, I provided the first part that's identified there. There's a subsection to it, so there's an A and a B. The A part is clearly identified in the background. The B part is also a reference to, but I wanted just to read the full statement that's in the statute to provide clarification, and then my interpretation. So in thirteen B, it says, "Annually include an item on the agenda of the first school board meeting of the school year, a notice that clearly identifies the pupil academic standards adopted by the school board that will be in effect for the school year."
Do we have met that?
My interpretation of that, and it says it clearly identifies the, the pupil academic standards adopted by the school board that will be in effect for that school year.
Must be on the agenda.
Correct. What, what are the concerns? Because I know I, when I first was on this board and we addressed this, I asked a somewhat similar question or concern. You guys can help me understand where, where your concerns are. But back a couple of years ago, I think probably the language, obviously, there might be some differences that are being presented here based off of the standards that are listed within reading, writing, math, et cetera. But my concern was, if I recall correctly, I think there was, in the math area, there's some Common Core language in there, for instance, or there was, I should say, there was some Common Core language in there. And I know this board previously had opposed Common Core, implementing Common Core within the district. And so that's why I had asked the question. However, over time, and I used it as a learning event, and I think in teaching and learning, we've, we've learned too that while that we have concerns about some language that, that is in these academic standards that are identified, ultimately, because of local control, we can take that list of standards and say, we, we're going to adopt this standard one, we're not going to adopt standard two, we're going to create our own standard three, et cetera, et cetera. So this is, I view this as, as the long list of things, and then the work happens with Jake in teaching and learning, and on all of our stu, all of our teachers, et cetera, to basically say, that was our starting point, but this is what, this is the direction that we want this district to go in with regards to those standards. So I, that, that's kind of my opinion on it, my viewpoint on it. But you guys can help me understand where, where you're coming from as well.
Well, I printed out the standards, and this is, and I'm not sure that anybody went through them all, but I know there's concerns in a lot of the things that are being brought to our, you know, to the schools and to the curriculum, whether it's, it's SEL, like you said, Common Core, and just actually taking time to read through them instead of just passing a standard and accepting it. I think that to take the due diligence and actually go through and see what's in the standards before you just make a blanket motion to approve all of them.
Ross, Ross.
It, it, I, I try to attend all the committee meetings, but I might have missed one somewhere. Was this material reviewed previously before tonight in the Teaching and Learning Committee?
It was not.
It wasn't?
Correct.
Okay.
The current motion does appear to be, and I didn't verify it line by line, but it looks like the same motion from last year in regards to the manner in which we adopted it, which was, one, its adoption of the posting, and, two, the adoption of section three of the state standards.
That's correct, it's identical to last year except for the dates.
Has anything changed in that, section three, from last year to this year?
No, section three is just the standards that are involved in the curricular areas that are identified in that notice. And the curricular areas that are identified in the notice are the ones that we are required to adopt by the state of Wisconsin, that we have to have standards in those areas.
Which, which ran through teaching and learning last year?
Correct.
Correct, but for understanding is that we have to adopt standards, not necessarily these standards. There's reasons in which we would like to, given some of the processes that happened throughout the year in regards to testing and ensuring we're meeting some of those educational goals that could fluctuate the school and district's report card. Is that correct?
Correct. These standards are the standards that form the foundation for what our students are tested on in the forward exam. They also ultimately lead to standards that are aligned to the ACT. So those are the major accountability tools that our schools are measured by, and those have a significant impact on our state report card.
I know going into this last year, I was overwhelmed in regards to what the standards are, how they're applied, specifically what's all in them. And knowing we have to do this every year, I was generally ready to understand what we were going through. And I think we have two new members that were hit with that saying, "What is all this?" And we found out Thursday, Friday, that this was on the agenda to play the stump to chump or I got you game. And I don't think that's what's occurring here, but I can understand that, that feeling of approach.
One of the things that I would point to, when I brought the reading review to the Teaching and Learning Committee, one of the things that I highlighted were the prioritized standards that were involved with the work that the reading review team did. So you can see within that work, there are a number of standards that are related to reading, but within that, the team prioritized that. Mr. Pollak was kind of leading to that process where we have a slate of standards that we adopt, and then within those standards, we prioritize them. This has gotten better over time, but there have been several studies on standards, and they'd said roughly, it takes about seventeen years' worth of schooling to cover what's in our current state standards. We don't have that many years of schooling that our students go through. So within that, school districts prioritize standards. And within those standards, we then look at our curriculum, the UBD process that we've identified to, to figure out what are the essential learning outcomes that we want our students to get to. So within that, we're prioritizing that whole bank of standards as Mr. Pollak accurately described. We take that whole bank of standards, and then we prioritize within that. So even if there is a standard that we're adopting tonight that, within its interpretation or within its content, we take issue to that. We have local control over how that standard is then implemented in a classroom. We can choose to not prioritize that standard, not have it be a part of our curriculum documents, and then thus it wouldn't show up in our, our UBDs or our understanding by design documents. Those are our curriculum documents that explain what our teachers teach in the classrooms.
But as a board, we adopt the standards. As an administration, you prioritize...
Correct, with, with review teams and then...
And then you approve said prioritized curriculum?
Standards attached to it, yeah.
Correct, so you would see every standard that's taught at every grade level for the given subject?
And it's my understa, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is my understanding, I mentioned it before, but just for clarity, if we were to move forward, adopt these standards, and through our work, through your area, and within the district itself, if we've identified an additional standard that we didn't approve, that, you know, we can still take that on due to local control as, as something that we, we deem important. And it's just in addition to everything else. It's not, by approving these standards, for instance, it wouldn't kind of box us into only working within that space. It's, it's the starting point, if you will, for, for what work is done.
Correct, you can, you can add learning intentions to your curriculum documents.
Can you take out from the documents?
Correct, that's, so that's the prioritization process that I described. So in our, in our UBDs, one of the examples that I provided was what we did in reading, and there's a document that shows the prioritized standards there. Those are the standards that we're highlighting, that we're saying there are direct connections to the curriculum work that has to happen in reading in these grade levels so that students make appropriate progress. You can take a standard out altogether and say, "This is a standard that we're not addressing within our curriculum." Thus, it wouldn't have any learning intentions tied to it. Our students wouldn't be assessed on it using our local assessments. I can't guarantee that if we take a standard and we cut it and we say, "We're not going to teach this in our classroom," I can't guarantee that that standard wouldn't be assessed at some point on a state or national exam. But I can say that within our curriculum, we're not assessing it. It's not something that we prioritize, it's something that we're going to focus the learning of our students on.
Well, is there any more specific discussion around what we have in front of us and the motion on the table?
I'll just add my comments to it, that I was quick to second that because this, this whole packet for tonight's agenda came on Thursday, and there was a lot of reading involved. I mean, a lot of people don't see it, but hundreds and hundreds of pages to go through.
Hundred and thirty-five, I believe.
I, I was quick to second it because this is one of the agenda items I, I didn't fully read. Now, the, the conversations that we had here, I find very useful because as a new member, also to, to have, you know, these standards put and say, "Hey, we're going to vote on these in a couple of days, and they're, they're good for the year." I go, well, you know, I, I want to see what they are. I do have a better understanding now of saying, oh, you know, they were those standards from last year, and there's been very few changes, but that would have been good in...
Yeah, so in terms of the standard documents, and this happens at the, the state level where you'll see standards get revised and updated over time, there haven't been any revisions to the core areas that are identified that we have to adopt standards in that area. And again, they are the standards that, in all the Teaching and Learning Committees that I reference in terms of where we start, in terms of the foundation, of, these are the learning elements that we want our students to come to, the understandings that we want them to come to. They aren't new or different for this year if there is ever that time where the state is looking at adopting new reading standards, and there's major adjustments done to those, similar to what Ms. Altenorf did. Earlier tonight, I'll bring, you know, the highlights of the major revisions that have taken place within that curricular area so that you're aware of those long before you're put in the position to adopt those standards. But these are the same standards that we've used this year and then previous years before that, so they've been in place for multiple years.
I must have signed up for a newsletter from WASB, which is a legal and policy services newsletter, where they mentioned it back in, on June twenty-first. So I'll forward that on to the board if you're interested in also receiving it that way. Because I, when I read this, that's what I kind of started flipping the pages to see, you know, what, if I noticed anything that was any different or unusual or whatnot from, from previous, the previous year, so. previous, the previous year, so.
No, motion's on the table. I guess my addition is, if we have board members that aren't comfortable with their timeframe in which to review or what they were given to review this, I'd find it unethical to ask them to take a vote on it and move forward tonight. Being in that situation recently and understanding the processes behind all of this, I don't think it's unfair to ask that we push this a month, have the committee review any concerns, and bring it to the August full board. I believe we met the statute requirement of discussion. Ultimately, what would happen if the board decided not to approve these tonight? Do you understand what I'm raising in regards to that? Ultimately, the statute would read that we have to approve these tonight, which I don't believe it does. It states we have to discuss them tonight. That would basically be bringing an item to the table with a gun to our head, saying, you have no choice, you have to do this. Then why are we taking a vote on it? Now, with my understanding with DPI, they're in charge of the entire state in the standards in which they set, in the demographics and in the districts, and local control across those. Desires vary as far as what is, would be preferred in those communities. So, they're trying to throw an entire blanket over all of those, which is encompassed in some of these things, in this in its entirety. We have the ability to go through this if we desire and remove things altogether to create transparent understanding as to what exactly, not only are we approving as an adopted standard, but to help give you clarification on when you're building out your prioritization as well as to the community, what we do not approve as standards, I won't call it imposed, but suggested by the state. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, for clarification, this was part, we talked about biennial budget this, tonight, this was actually built into biennial budget in twenty fifteen, seventeen as annual, before that, districts were not transparent. So, I think, I want to set the context where it came from. It's not DPI necessarily imposing, it was legislation imposed in twenty fifteen. I don't disagree that we have the discussion and notice of set standards, and the teaching and learning committee can vet that out more to answer those questions, and we can move forward from there.
Yeah, and clarification on, I understand DPI is not stating that we have to do this, but the standards we have in front of us were built.
Correct, right. They provide a bank so that districts aren't trying to make them up, and they're aligned to the state assessment that was brought forth by legislation as well.
Will this impede, will pushing this a month impede any work that's currently being done around the standards that are in place from last year? That would remain in place until we would make this new adoption?
I may have missed part of that question. Did you just ask if this work will impede or not adopting it for this month? No, we would continue forward between now and then. I'm only meeting with one set of teachers, our math teachers, to work around math curriculum, so there's not a significant.
Given what was brought in front of our committee in regards to the standards that were being prioritized around the reading curriculum development, no one, I think, here had an opinion of, we don't like those prioritized. So, I think you have a general understanding. We gave some members an extra month here to look at the full standards. I have a feeling the ones that may be disagreed with aren't impeding, or if they would potentially be removed down the line, wouldn't impede your work that's currently happening, or setting, force you to set a different course.
Yeah, I think what you're saying, to say it another way, is the state has everything in the standards, and there's some things that we might not want taught in our schools. So, we'll pull those out, pull those items out, and I think the motion on the, we have right now is to table it?
To send it to.
The committee, yeah, okay. So, yeah, I think the committee takes a look at it, and, you know, we reviewed all the standards, and we pull the items. We're probably not teaching some of those items now, I believe, so it's maybe not that big of a deal, but I think we want to make sure we're not teaching some of the items because the state tends to have everything in there, and there's some items that I don't think we want in there.
I would agree with that statement. Tom?
Just a general topic. If you're concerned that there's something in there such as critical race theory, if there is, we already have policy that would disallow that type of practice. So, I would be okay moving forward. I'm also okay sending this to committee if we have members that want to have some extra time to review it.
Yeah, I don't know if the concerns are necessarily critical race theory, and the policy that I think you're referencing does a good job in with what can be asked and not asked of a student or staff member. It doesn't necessarily drill down to the way some of these standards would implement critical race theory. And the only reason why I'm commenting on that is I don't think this is specifically around that. I think there's some other potential issues or concerns that are on that, but I appreciate you. Yeah, we do have policy in place that does negate certain teaching in our district that would also help guide these gentlemen in their endeavor to prioritize these standards.
Two, sorry, two things. One is, I'd be okay moving forward to, but I'll probably defer to the motion so that our new colleagues have the time to review. The second point would be a little bit more definition about the job teaching and learning would do, assuming that this passes. Are we, what would the committee, what would be the idea of what the committee would be doing so that, since I'm a member of the committee, I can prepare? Would the idea, and feel free to jump in, would the idea be to go section by section and say yea or nay to different sta, like, what does that look like? Because I'm not necessarily convinced that we have to go back to committee or just give more time and review it as a full board.
Can I make a suggestion that if this is tabled this evening and go back to committee, that at the committee meeting, Mr. Mizziak start by laying out the purposes standards again for the full committee and the community at home and other board members, the curriculum review process, and where board members have access in that process to adopt iterations of board-approved curriculum. So, we take this giant document, which to your point, Ms. Higginbothan, is overwhelming, and how the committee, Jake's team narrows that down through the review process and then brings those phases to the teaching and learning committee and then to the full board that starts to finite and really show, let's take reading, for example, at kindergarten, these are the prioritized standards at first grade, where then the committee and then the full board have the opportunity to question as we sift down to more specifics that we know are aligned to the state assessment, so we're not deterring from achievement outcomes for all of our kids. But that could be the basis, to your point, Mr. Pollak, of the teaching and learning committee, and then any other questions or concerns members have around questionable standards that may be, have risen to your, you know, height alertness of something you're concerned about.
So, for each of these, for social studies or for the math or for the ELA, do you have the standards that we've adopted that we could compare and say, this is what we're doing currently versus this whole, you know, hundred and, well, probably.
They're posted on our website, in the manner in which it's last year's adoption and approval.
We, Mr. Mizziak, you can speak to this, Jake. We're going through curriculum review, we're starting over in Germantown because curriculum documents weren't in place. So, we're doing a systematic approach, and you've seen it this year in reading, as now we go into the pilot phase. So, maybe laying, to my point, laying out that curriculum review process and how we develop and determine what's going to be taught in Germantown versus it's just kind of everyone does, teaches what they want to teach. I don't know if you have anything more to add, Jake, to a possible committee meeting?
No, I think what you've laid out.
I think the recap is fine. I think the intent, from what I'm hearing, is for a chance for them to review it on their own, have discussion if there's concerns, potentially offer suggested edits at that time because we're legally allowed to do so, and move forward with some form of recommendation out of the committee to the full board. As all committee meetings, anyone is welcome to attend and make comment from a board level. The voting rights will remain with the three members of the committee on what that recommendation or potential edits would be. Kind of to what Tracy's question was, that it's an opportunity I think we should take. I understand we can, we could adopt all of this, and we do have an understanding of how we edit and apply, but we also have policy language and handbook language that refers to adopted standards that would reflect of all standards, similar to why we were only adopting section three last year of the standards and not the prelude to that in which those standards should be viewed for that same interest of local control. And importantly, take that process, give them the time to do it, and move forward from there. Is it a section by section review of this? That meeting would probably be twenty-four, forty-eight hours long at a minimum, but I think it would just ask to raise concerns, and I think it's important that the community sees this vet this fully and take that time. So, whether it's, I don't see it being a section by section review. I would think ninety percent of what's in here, we're going to agree with and can prioritize our way through. There might be some other stuff that just isn't for our district, but the committee can have that debate. Members that attend that can help us with that debate, and recommendations can come forward ultimately out of that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. When something like this of the size comes in front of, you know, members, it should almost be an annual thing that this immediately goes to committee for them to look off on and sign off on. And then those members that want to attend that committee meeting and listen to any changes that may have been made, like you said, can have input and have a better understanding of what's going on and what this process looks like than on Thursday night, having, you know, this come up and you go, on Sunday night, you're trying to read through this going, well, I'm going to vote on this? No.
The thing, if you've already read them, you know, and understand, then you don't, probably won't bring anything to the committee, which is.
Well, no, that's not true.
Well, no, no, you don't have to say it. Like, you're not going to have any changes, but different eyes see different things. You have two new members that will read this differently, possibly, you know, we're in different times than we were many years ago. So, I think it's just, it's important just to kind of take a good look before I just put my name in front of them.
And we're going to have that every year, elections every year, annual policies every year, so we should get in front of this and anticipate this.
Yeah. At that point, with the elections cycles every year, it gives the community a chance to voice their opinion on what direction they want to go, and then those members need to bring input into what that is, then reelected or reelected, depending on how those turn out, bring that opinion and that information and that viewpoint into the discussion, and we have that every year. Doesn't mean there's these groundbreaking changes that occur every year, but we need to allow that process to happen. So, if there's no further discussion, I would say, all in favor, all in favor of the motion to move this item to the teaching and learning committee to be reviewed further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item nine, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Who will be adjourned?
Second.
Time with the motion, came with the second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good night, thank you for coming.